For May 28th order, please rise to the pledge. Hold on, we have two Eagle Scouts here who are going to lead us in the pledge. Luke Conway and Caleb Nugent. You guys want to lead us or you want to come up?
Sure.
Come up front.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys. Okay, next is the two approval of the minutes from May 13th, 2019, and May 3rd, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Comments or revisions or changes? All in favor?
Aye.
First electors comments. I'm going to hold off till the end. Public comment. Let's get right into it then. Number five, discuss and take action to approve proclamation honoring Eagle Scout Caleb Nugent.
I can.
Except the proclamation isn't my folder.
The real one or can we read the one that's here?
The real one. We can read the.
Luke got copy of it, yeah.
Yeah. Caleb, we're going to have to bring it to you later, okay?
That's all right.
Sorry about that.
It's not your problem.
Okay. Remember if you want to read?
Yeah.
That is it? Whereas, the Board of Selectmen of the town of Madison hereby proudly acknowledges the outstanding award of Eagle Scout to a member of the Boy Scouts of America. Whereas throughout his commitment to a community with a dedication of purpose and a commitment to a high level of leadership excellence worthy of acclamation and praise by this board and the entire community. Whereas the Board gratefully recognizes the tremendous efforts of this young man, it is with great pride that the Board officially extends our congratulations to the newly awarded Eagle Scout and wishes him all of the best of luck in his future endeavors. Furthermore, by the powers vested in the Board of Selectmen by the State of Connecticut and the Madison Charter, we, the members of this Board, hereby unanimously acknowledge the scouting achievement of Caleb Nugent, done this 28th day of May, 2019, in the town of Madison, Connecticut.
Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Phil, why don't you go up and do a picture with you at least? I apologize for this. I don't know what happened to her.
Yeah.
Was she on the table?
I could use one of the congratulations.
And I also apologize if you don't feel good when we get to your.
No problem. Sorry, sorry. Thank you.
No problem. Oh, great.
Pictures?
Please.
I can't read.
You also?
Coming.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can you get a badge for this?
Yeah, photography merit badge.
All right. Perfect. Thank you.
Great. Thanks very much.
Thanks. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
That's awesome. Good job. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
That somebody just got off.
Really?
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Good job. Congratulations.
Caleb, real quick, what was your project? Your Eagle Scout?
I built, raised plenty of beds at Bow Farm for old people and community use.
Well, elderly. Senior population.
Very good. Good. Awesome. Thank you. Congratulations.
Can I withdraw my?
We should all be. They all need to be.
How'd you do that?
Get this. Tom here, button for green. Sorry about that.
Number six, discuss and take action to call the annual budget reconciliation town meeting to approve the following. Number one, special appropriation request from the police department in the amount of $34,000 upon special duty wages. Number two, other special appropriations as necessary. And number three, the establishment of a permanent coastal resiliency advisory board.
So moved.
Second, any discussion on that? All in favor? Go ahead, Al.
Did you determine that the coastal resiliency would be named an advisory board as opposed to a commission?
I think we have to because of the charter.
Yeah, that's right. I'm just going to make sure. Somebody made it determined.
I'm pretty sure that that Lauren checked out and we'll double check to be sure.
Hey, Tom?
We can always change the name in this subsequent meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Number seven.
Maybe I have battery because this light's on.
Okay, number seven, discussing take action to approve a bid waiver request from the North Madison Fire Department for a new Peterbilt Pierce tanker at a cost not to exceed $558,600. Funds are budgeted in 2019-2020 fiscal year.
So moved. Second.
Okay, so I need to say that we don't need to do this because this was bought as part of our purchasing program out of Sourceball, which is a competitive bidding process. So we've already done, you know, we don't need to bid waiver because we did go out for bid.
Awesome.
Okay?
So this is?
So they went through the state bid process anyways or whatever it is?
Right.
Okay.
So we're going to disregard this, number seven. Number eight, the following line transfers are designated as routine and appropriate for approval as a single action by the Board of Selectmen. If so desired, a Board member may request removal of any line transfer added to the consent agenda for review and discussion. Motion is to approve line transfers totaling $3,702.23.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
I think it's $8,702.23. Yeah. This is a title.
That would make a difference.
Yeah.
With Kevin Ferris, look at you. Nice.
Thank you, Gene.
Oh.
So I'll make a motion to approve line transfers totaling $8,702.23.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Discuss and take action to approve the resignation of Peter Bruce from the zoning Board of Appeals.
So moved with our gratitude for his service.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number 10, discuss and take action to approve the appointment of Peter Bruce to the Planning and Zoning Commission alternate for a term to expire January 1st, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number 11, discuss and take action to approve the resignation of William Cash from the Energy and Efficiency Committee.
So moved with our gratitude. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And discuss and take action to approve the appointment of Gary Nagle to the Energy and Efficiency Committee for a term to expire January 1st, 2023. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, at this point, I'd like to make a motion and we open the agenda for discussion of office space and not office space, but meeting space scheduling software by Ryan Duquesne.
I move that we open the agenda, create what, 12A?
Yeah, 12A. For the purposes of whatever you just said.
All right.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so all in favor will be discussion?
Just a discussion?
Yeah, discussion, yeah, we're not going to have any discussion regarding meeting scheduling software.
Sure. I appreciate the fact that you're trying to move at record speed, so I'll be brief.
We're not trying to move.
The Economic Development Commission has been evaluating the different options for a CAFRE over the past couple of years, and through that process, several of the commissioners suggested that we evaluate current utilization of community space, including not only space for arts and music, but also outside space, including surf club. And through that process, we determined there wasn't a very good system in place currently to gather analytical information on utilization. In addition to that, discovery is actually pretty hard to even get a list of the existing rooms that are available for the community access. It actually took me about two weeks to gather that information from individual departments. I happen to know those departments exist, so I can only imagine a member of the community would have a more challenging time navigating that. So through discussion and economic development and some research and quick research online, we found a few vendors that build out of the box software that plugs into municipal websites that allows for the municipal government to kind of program in the community space, set all sorts of rules in terms of hours of use, who can use it, what it can be used for, if there's a fee associated with it or not, and then allows the public to access that information that not only affords them with transparency, what's available to them in the community, but also allows for us to gather analytical information about utilization, how many rooms are being used. And when the new library comes online, there will be over 25 community spaces at our last count. I suspect there's probably even more than that once we figure out different uses in the schools. That doesn't include any use of the schools. It also takes a burden off of town employees from having to book that space, field phone calls, how can I reserve Memorial Town Hall when you're calling the, you know, the Selectmen's office or elsewhere and be referred to different places. So it makes it more efficient. This is certainly in line with state governments move to become more efficient about for like a one portal access for resident services. So the total cost of this is probably about $1,000 per year, so it's nominal, and it affords, again, residents better service and it allows for us to get better analytical information. So next time we go for a vote on a $3 million or $10 million or $100 million project, we should have better data to say, yes, our utilization is at 95 percent, we do need more space, or no.
Thanks, Tom. You know, just for everybody's certification, we have talked to Art Sickle about this.
That's my question.
Yeah, and he's telling us that we have the capability to do this, so there's been a little bit of disconnect between us and Art and Ryan, and so the point of this meeting tonight was to kind of get the Board of Selectmen on board to say, you know, we'd like to pursue this and, you know, kind of like, kind of light a fire so we can find out what we need to do next to actually make this, you know, available to us.
Is Art supportive?
Yeah, oh yeah. I mean, he's not against at all. I don't think he totally understood what we were talking about.
Right. I kind of outlined things in an email, Scott, and, you know, so there wasn't a dialogue back and forth. So I think the next step and what the Economic Development Commission did was to book, to bring it to the Board of Selectmen for support, and so I think once that's done, then we can go through the process of, you know, digging a little deeper and getting Art kind of the information he needs to hopefully take a next step.
I think it's a terrific idea. It's a good step forward. I think we, the town, have to do a couple of things in order to make effective use of the software. One is we have to recognize the balkanization and turf issues which are involved in booking spaces, and I think we're all aware of what some of those are. And secondly, Ryan, as I heard your vision, it occurs to me there still seems to be need for a single individual to overall allow the booking or to approve the booking. I'm not sure whether I heard clearly, whether people, you envisioned a system in which individual citizens could book a room on their own.
I think, Al, it would depend, I mean, I think those details could be determined once, you know, it kind of gets the, you know, a little bit further down the road. I think technologically speaking, anything is possible. I mean, we could allow for the, we could write, you know, 200 rules in the system, and if a person has the right code and books it for the right time or has, you know, logs in with the right credentials, or we could allow for department heads probably to approve each individual. You know, I think that probably is not what I would hope for, but.
There's probably an ad man, super ad man rights or whatever. It's traditional.
Sure, absolutely.
That's kind of. Do you guys know though, or have you even thought about just like installation costs? So that would be, to me, $1,000 is wonderful from a yearly subscription standpoint, but to me, the big nut is going to be installing it. If it's a, you know, is it a kiosk at the meeting room? Is it just the online portal? Are there multiple technologies that have to work together? Do we know about that yet?
The one that I looked at, Scott, was simply a web interface that allowed for booking. It's actually, it's like widget code that plugs in, it's secure right into our website so a user doesn't have to leave the town's website. But you're right, I mean, you could go all the way up and, you know, put little tablets outside.
That's what we have at our office.
Yeah. You know, I mean, my idea is, is let's start with replacing a system that's antiquated currently.
Totally.
But, you know, right now, we don't have tablets outside the rooms that show, you know, and I'm thinking, you know, government rooms either. I'm thinking more kind of senior center rooms, town gym.
Yeah, good, yeah. And we have more coming online with the new library and things like that too. So coordinating with them will be helpful.
And we want these spaces utilized, and I think right now, the public isn't quite sure what's available to them.
That's a great point.
I'm not always clear as to what's government space and what's community space.
No, and I like the idea of having statistics and data about the usage because, you know, we get a lot of complaints about there not being enough meeting space, but the fact of the matter is, I think a lot of times, there's conflicts with when they want it.
Yeah.
If you could.
Just that particular room or something.
You know, it's just that everybody wants Tuesday night at 7:00.
Everybody wants upper Memorial Town Hall.
Right.
Okay, so that's out. What's the next option?
So, you know, this would help us to analyze and better understand.
And better planning.
Right.
Well, and not bombarding Port Warren with, you know, 90 calls a week of, hey, booking a room.
Correct.
It's an efficiency conversation for sure.
Yep. Okay.
What's the next step?
Well, we just were discussing, so.
Yeah, I mean, ideally, Tom, you know, I would love, I don't know what's routine for you, but if you could, in concept support for a next step kind of evaluation, I think that would help in terms of town staff.
I think I'll probably try to get Art and Ryan and Dave and I together and, you know, look at this and see what the town software can do, what it can't do, how it compares, and start to move down that road so we can make some progress.
Yeah, great idea.
Okay?
Yeah, great.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Okay, so I have a 12B too. We're just going to keep doing this.
Why wouldn't you?
I'd like to make a motion to open the agenda to discuss and take action to finalize the strategic plan.
You're looking for action?
Just as termed in terms of setting up the next couple of meetings that we need to do to finalize it.
All right, I'm moving the agenda. I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so 12B is discuss and take action to finalize the strategic plan.
So we have taken a. You got actual, I think we got to move the.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The actual motion.
Okay.
So I'll move the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Yeah, you guys can go. Don't worry.
Thank you.
Good to see you. Thanks. You know, we were rolling right along and then we kind of, you know, got in the budget and everything kind of took precedence, so we did have a goal of finishing this by the end of June. I'd like to see if we can get back on track and finish that up. I don't think we have an awful lot left to do, but I think a couple of meetings, you know, where we get back into action and finish it up will probably, is probably all we need.
Don't we have public meetings as well? Are you talking about meetings for us?
Yeah, just for us at this point, to bring the finished product to the public.
Oh, okay.
We need to finish the products, you know, from where we live.
Yep.
And then bring it to the public for public hearings, yeah.
What about, just throw darts, but do we need to do anything with Board of Finance or Board of Education in terms of, you know, an information or communication to them on your sort of the draft plan or whatever?
Well, I think once we've had this meeting where we finalize it in our minds, then we can communicate it to them and we can, you know, we can accept feedback, we can do whatever. But I think that we got to pull the.
It's our working draft type of thing, right? Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay.
So I'll have, you're looking to try and schedule a couple of workshops between now and, yeah.
Okay, all right, so I'll have Lauren.
Perfect. Yeah, sounds great.
I remember when you use the word workshop, these are public meetings.
Yes.
They're all public meetings, right?
Gus is always there.
Public meetings, but they're, but the purpose is for us to finalize plan.
Right, it's not a special meeting of.
No other agenda.
It's not. Right, it's not.
It's a focused agenda. Good, that's great.
Okay. Number 13, tax abatements and refunds.
Do we have it?
Do you have a package?
I didn't see it in the package.
There's none. Sorry.
I really tabled.
Yeah, I think we need to table that one.
Public comment here, yeah.
What we didn't, what we don't have on here is Selectmen's comments too, and I have something to say at the end, but why don't we do public comment first and then we can.
Yeah.
Selectmen's comments.
Yeah, that's good. Okay. Gus Ward, Dan. Tom, I wanted to just follow up from the last meeting. We had a awfully thorough discussion about the state, proposed state statute of teacher retirement funding. I was looking for an update.
Should we add a topic? Because we're not.
As of right now, the teacher's pension is not in the budget. You know, delegating it to us is not in the budget, it's not included.
It's not.
Right, so.
Our action was effective in convincing the legislature.
Exactly what we said.
Definitely what we said.
It doesn't mean it can't pop up somewhere else in an implementer or something like that, but we're hoping that it's off the table for this year.
I make a motion that that was 12C.
Okay.
Second.
Gus, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Gus Ward, I had 34. It was very circle. You've got my memo, and as I said, I didn't realize that Lauren was out and I wasn't sure whether it was forwarded to you guys or not, so I gave you another copy tonight. There's an additional page that I did not have when I put this together. I found it over the weekend as to what the forms of government are in just pretty much all the towns in the state of Connecticut. And I've been of the opinion, as you well know, for a long, long time, that our town meeting form of government is not working, and it's not worked for a long, long time. So we have not had a charter revision, we've had a review but not a revision, in 13 years. And our next door neighbor in Clinton has converted their form of government, and it, as I mentioned in the memo, it was mentioned in the meeting minutes of the April Board of Selectmen's meeting in Guilford, that they were disappointed with their turnout of nobody from the public showed up at your annual town meeting. And one of the members mentioned that they had looked at the town, representative of town meeting form of government, the last time they did a revision, which I think was 2008, and that maybe they should go back and revisit it. So just a comment, it was not anything more than that. If you were to do this in the timeline we're looking at, if this form of government was going to be changed, it occurs over a two-year period, so this, if you put together a committee and the committee reported back to you guys in July of 2020, you've got an election this year, you could have a next public election, it would be in '21, the town election. In '20, it would be on the ballot, whatever it is. And if it were to pass, either one of these is a change of form of government, which is rather radical. The, both the town charter, the town vote in Clinton and the town vote in Simsbury, whose charter I admire very much, I've mentioned it a couple of times, they made their charter revision effective with the next town election. So if this were to go forward and something happened in the meeting, the vote in 2020, November 2020, the ballot question would signify that it would be effective with the election in 2021. So if you're wondering how this thing worked because of changing, if you do a record charter revision without changing the form of government, it takes effect immediately with the vote or 30 days later or whatever it specifies on the vote. So I would ask you to seriously look at this, and because some of this is not, I'm very familiar with it, because I've been involved with two charter revisions myself, plus pushing for this since 2010, that I'm very familiar with it, but you might want to put together a workshop.
Because I have a question. On your listing of the town meetings and the attendance, the first kind of so, you have like, what looks like.
Yeah, because up to that point, I asked the town clerk to start counting the members, the number of people that were at the meeting. They used to report just a total number, and I asked her if she would please split the number of town officials that were there and the number of members of the public. So the first one.
So we add those two together?
Yeah, yeah. So the first number is the town official, I mean, manager of the public, and a second number is the town official.
Makes sense.
But just to give you an idea of what it is.
So you said the first number is the public and the second number is the town officials? Or vice versa?
Yes. The first number is the member, the public.
So at one meeting, we had five people from the public and 22 town officials?
Yeah.
Do we have 22 towns?
Whatever it is, you see the numbers are small.
Yeah, yeah.
And just the other thing is, in the towns that have that form of town manager form of government, every single one of them that I've looked at, and I've looked at a half a dozen of them, their charters, they all have two things that are in there. Their budget always goes to a vote to the public, and number two is if there are appropriations exceeding a certain amount of dollars, most of them mention 1% of the current budget, which would be like 80 or 82, $820,000 in Madison, that has to go to a public referendum. And it also, most of the towns allow for a, the public to ask for a referendum with a 5% of the voters who were signed petition. So that's the backstop to either the RTM or to the other, that there are two occasions where the public can intervene.
Great, thank you, Gus. Some great things to think about. Thanks, Gus.
So I would ask you to take, and just to show you, this isn't in the Bradford paper, they have 30 members of their RTM, and they have a big square table layout in one of their, I don't know where it is, I've never been to it, but.
I think it's in their community center.
It seems like it's a logistics. They sit around in a square.
We could just put a table all the way around here and sit in the middle.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's my story. So I'd ask you to seriously look at it and consider it.
Okay. Does anybody have anything they want to report on?
Ambulance court hall tournament Saturday, 3:00 to 6:00.
Nice.
Be there, please.
$80 per team of two. There will be refreshments.
Correct. Liquid and otherwise.
Liquid and otherwise.
Very good. Do they, do we, have we heard on signups? Are they doing okay?
No, they're slow, but, I mean, we've heard from a lot of people who are going to sign up, they just haven't put the trigger.
Yeah, I've got two teams.
They're looking for where to sign up?
Right.
I have a sign up, yes.
Right, a lot of people, even in town, hold on to sign up. But we're expecting to have at least 35 teams. Oh, well, that's good. And we can go a few more if people show up, you know, late, so if you're not signed up, come down anyway and we'll get you in.
How did the last fundraiser for the ambulance go?
What was the last?
Was it the?
The whiskey tasting at the hotel?
I think it was.
I remember that.
Bruce has that going.
So it went well, they didn't have the final numbers, but it was, I think they're
And we can go a few more if people show up, you know, late, so if you, if you're not signed up, come down anyway and we'll get you in.
How did the last fundraiser for the ambulance go?
What was, what was the last one?
Was it the...
The whiskey tasting?
What was it?
Wasn't it the whiskey tasting at the hotel?
I think it was.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't remember. Bruce has that going on, remember?
So, it went well, they didn't have the final numbers, um, but it was, I think they're expecting to net several thousand dollars out of it.
That's great.
Um, it was a fabulous time, it was well attended, um, and I think they're gonna look to have, um, more and similar fundraising and, and certainly, they're active, they're thinking about different ways that they can, um, fundraise to, to help offset some of their expenses.
It seems like they really sort of cranked up the fundraising now, is this great?
Good to see it.
Yeah. Do they have a goal, I mean, is there a...
Hundred thousand dollars.
Is that what they're trying to do? Is it a hundred?
Well, that's, whatever you're telling.
That's the whole.
Yeah. They're in the hole, that's the goal.
All right, sounds good to me.
Okay. Anybody else?
Um, would, would you mind, I think it's relevant, would you mind just giving a quick just statement about the lease, where we are with the lease? An O L N lease?
Oh, sure. Um, we spoke, uh, last week with, uh, people from O L N P A. Um, they are going to, we, we agreed, they asked for, um, no changes to the lease, they just asked for some timing on the payments and I thought that was reasonable to ask for. Um, so they will give us, I think it's a hundred fifty thousand down with the, with the first, uh, signing.
Nice.
Um, the balance of two-thirds of the amount before they enter the building and then the balance of the, the final third before the end of the year.
Great.
All right?
That sounds great.
Yeah. And the only other thing that we agreed to was that, there was some clause in there that said they would replace capital equipment and we said, you know, repair is fine, I don't think we need to be replacing boilers for a one-year lease, so...
As an expectation, it's the town will repair.
Right, right, yeah, absolutely. No, so it's not our, it will be our responsibility. Um, okay, so I just, one other thing I kind of wanted to talk about. Um, I met with, um, Scott Erskine and Stacy last week to talk about the surf club and what we are gonna do for the C I P relative to the surf club issue, because we, we do need to get something for the surf club in.
Is this for the actual building or for the beach passes?
For the building.
Building.
Yeah, this is for the C I P, this is capital. Um, we, um, Scott had a couple of different, uh, analyses done by Colliers to see where we were. And there were, there were three different things that he came up with. One was just to renovate the building according to whatever it needs now to, you know, continue to be used the way it is. The second one was, um, renovation and, um, addition according to the plans that were, that we got from Gary Leonard, the architect.
Yep.
Okay, and final was to demolish the building and build it anyway. Okay? So the order of magnitude of those three choices was, um, roughly less than five hundred thousand dollars for the renovations to just keep it going. And that would be, uh, a number that would not come in over fifty percent of the value of the building, so they wouldn't have to raise it up, but it would just do the necessary repairs. Um, the Gary Leonard, um, proposal came in between eight and fifteen million dollars to, to do that. And demolition and rebuilding was in the order of fifty million.
Fifty, five zero.
I...
Five oh?
I can't imagine, I can't imagine what we would be building for that.
The building on the library for fifteen?
The numbers were astounding. So we talked about the fact that there's already money in the C I P, about a half million dollars for planning in the C I P. That would cover the renovations to the building and, um, so they're probably gonna go and ask to change that designation in the C I P from...
Turn to planning.
To renovation. Um, and this is all, I'm just reporting what we talked about, so, you know, this, so you guys understand. Um, the other, uh, conversation was about, instead of trying to build a, a new building on, on the site of the surf club, to build like a venue, you know, like a, some kind of a hall, that would be a lot cheaper because it would only be a hall, kitchen and bathrooms. And it would, that would be where the bathrooms are now, the, the, um, brick building, you know, with the weird looking brick building with bathrooms in it. We would knock that down and, and basically build a venue there. And the idea is to try to build something that would be, uh, a place where we can have proms if we want to, or, you know, to, to keep things more in town. So that's, that's the conversation that we had last week. Um, you know, I think they'll come to the C I P and we'll have some more conversations, but I just wanted to update you guys on where we're standing there, because I, I think with, with Academy looming against the C I P...
They would need the whole picture, yeah.
Yeah, they wanted to make sure that there was something in there about the surf club, which, you know, I think was a good idea.
I think I'm, I'm fairly skeptical of the fifty billion though.
I know.
Even the eight to fifteen seemed high, from what they were talking about. Didn't seem like that radical of a, an upgrade to the, what Gary Leonard...
I don't understand. Of course, if they're that wrong, maybe the hundred million is really only fifty.
Oh boy.
Or two.
Yeah. Right, it could go either way, you're right.
Anybody got anything else?
No, that's good.
Yep.
How about you're in a place down and just bring a food truck?
That's one of the options, Gus, and you're gonna run it.
Possibility. Motion to adjourn?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.